Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Welcome. I'll call the Paulding County Work Session for March 22, 2022 to order at this time. And I'm looking around for elected folks. And I think we're good there. If you've got your mobile phone on and if you'd turn it off. Would the marshal bring the list forward for me, please? It is always a privilege to have Chaplain Joey Meeks, the Paulding County Sheriff's Office Chaplain, be with us to bring us our words of prayer and also lead us in the pledge to flag stand, if you're able.
Let's do our pledge first. Let's salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Again, thank y'all so much for allowing us to be here today and everything that y'all do for the county. So let's pray. Father, we love you and we thank you so much. And Lord, we see so much going on around us, Father. And I pray, God, that you just touch and put your hand on Paulding County. We pray for all of our elected officials. I pray that you give them wisdom. I pray that you give them guidance, Father. And as we see things happen in the world, we pray for Ukraine and the whole mess that's over there. Praying, God, that you'd put your hand upon it. Praying, Lord, that you'd touch all of our first responders, Father. Praying that you'd just build a huge hedge around them. Praying that you'd protect their mind, their body, and their spirit each day, Father. And I pray, God, that you'd just add a blessing to the meeting here today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chaplain Meeks. Item number one, the minutes, is the March 8, 2022 Work Session Minutes. And the March 8, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes are available for review. Under announcements today, we have a Team Paulding segment on the Trash Task Force. So let's take a look at that.
In 2021, Paulding County created a new multi-departmental group to combat litter in our community. It's called the Trash Task Force. This task force created an online form allowing anyone to report litter in the county. To make access to this form easier, a QR code was developed, signs were made, and placed in 32 locations throughout the county. You will find these signs at our libraries, parks, trailheads, city halls, high schools, and many other locations. Here's what to expect when filling out the Trash Task Force Report Litter Form. First, you will receive an email to confirm your form was received. Next, an investigation will begin and conducted by one of the following departments: Paulding County Marshal's Office, Paulding County DOT, Paulding County Sheriff's Office, the City of Hiram, or the City of Dallas. You can also access this form by going to paulding.gov and searching for Trash Task Force, or visit keeppauldingbeautiful.org. Please help us with this endeavor to beautify our community. If you see litter, report litter.
That's a great segment. Thank you very much, Jeff Harkins, and your whole team, the Public Information Department. Those two girls, they were twins, that are interns here, so I'm glad they got to be on the video. The other announcement that I wanted to make is the Board of Commissioners, occasionally it's the opportunity to go down to Atlanta and be a part of the Legislative Breakfast. And the middle picture there is in the old train station where we had the breakfast. And we had speakers, Ralston, Speaker Ralston, and then Lieutenant Governor Duncan, and several other speakers. And then we move on to the Capitol, and we link up with the state delegates. And we actually are in front of Representative Gravely's office. So you see our county clerk went with us, and our couple of representatives there mommed a hand and gullet. And then it looked like they went down on the steps. I wasn't with them at that point. I had another engagement. But we had Representative Kimberly Alexander. And there's Gravely on the right. So it's good to be able to go down and give some information and get feedback, both from the state delegates. So that was March 9, just a couple of weeks ago. Thank you, Jeff, for putting that together. Under bid awards today, first is to authorize the purchase of a single-axle dump truck for the Transportation Department to Peach State Truck Center in the amount of $115,117. Ms. Pollard. Good morning.
This was a budgeted item from the FY '22 budget. And DOT had requested to replace a 97 dump that had 252,000 miles on it. And Tim Atchison has requested pricing from the state, using the state contract pricing, and he's recommending award to Peach State Truck Center. Unless you have any questions.
Okay, I think you're gonna be the star of the show here. So moving on to number three is award of the 2022 Asphalt Project Contract One to the low bidder, CW Matthews Contracting Company, in the amount of $4,278,043. They'll be doing work in post one, two, and three.
I've asked George if he doesn't mind to give you more information.
Does he know anything about asphalt?
Thank you, George.
Was that a rhetorical question? Finance advertised the DOT 2022 Asphalt Project Contract One. The work consisted of milling, patching, leveling, and plant mix resurfacing on all of or a portion of 11 county roads, a total of 9.83 miles in posts one, two, and three. Four bidders submitted proposals for this work. The bids were opened on March 11, 2022 with CW Matthews, the lowest responsive bidder, at $4,724,043. The bids we received from all the four contractors were in a pretty tight range with the low bid and the high bid within 10.5% of each other. So that indicates that's fair pricing for this market. It is much, it is a little bit more than we received last year. The work will be funded using Elmeg Sploston General Funds, and the project has a completion date of October 31, 2021. Right now, with the economic climate, the liquid asphalt and fuel prices are a little volatile, and we're basically seeing that in these bids. Other local municipalities and counties have also had increases from the previous year on their asphalt contracts. Obviously, a large part of asphalt is making it, getting it to the site, and then laying it down involves a lot of asphalt cement and fuel. So that's where we're at, and I can answer any questions if you may have any.
I've got a question that'll apply to both this one and the next one. But if you would review, I think I ask you this every time, review which roads, which highways, which byways are selected?
Typically, at this point in time, we essentially do a worst-first scenario. So we go through and have our construction inspectors. They rate roads in the different posts. And based on the rating system, you're looking at cracks in a certain area, longitudinal, transverse, potholes, if there's any ravelling, and basically get a score for that roadway. You don't do, you do representative sections of the roadway. Basically, what you're trying to do is pick out those locations that need it worse than others. And that's the way we do it now. In the future, we're going to look at a pavement management system. But for now, that's how we do it.
Okay, item number four is to award 2022 Asphalt Project Contract Two to the low bidder, Baldwin Paving Company Incorporated, in the amount of $3,459,910.69, located in all four posts.
Again, Finance advertised a DOT 2022 Asphalt Project Contract Two. Again, that work consisted of milling, patching, leveling, and plant mix resurfacing on all over a portion of nine roads, 9.83 miles. The work is in post one, two, and three, and four, like you said. Four bidders submitted proposals for this work, the same four that did Contract One. Also, the bids were open on March 11 with Baldwin Paving as the lowest responsive bidder at $3,459,910.69 of the four bids. The difference between the low bid and the high bid was 12.6%. This work will be funded using general funds and Sploston. This project also has a completion date of October 31, 2022.
Any questions? Glad to see the percentages between the different bids staying that close together.
That basically shows that we're receiving fair bids. Again, we would obviously like the bids to come in lower, but if that's what the market dictates, and that's what other folks are paying, we have to go in line. I would love to have a bidder come in and bid a million dollars less than what we're paying, but unfortunately, that's not what we're seeing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Under Reports from Committees and Departments, we're glad to have Ms. Lori Ashmore, Water System Director, to give us an update on the new notification system.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a brief PowerPoint for you, so let me see if I can pull that up. Our current systems take a lot of time, a lot of manpower, to distribute information to our customers. And we are implementing, at this point, we're glad to finally be rolling out our notify system that will allow us to get that information in the hands of customers much more quickly and decrease the amount of time and dollars spent on notifying people the way we are today. It's a very simple process. It is a, just recurring slide, it's a process by which we can set up templates for things that we do on a recurring basis, like monthly past due notices on water billing, things like notifications that there's going to be an interruption in service in an area, a planned interruption, or even emergency interruptions. So we currently, we hand-deliver notices to addresses that are going to be impact, oh, I'm sorry, I'm a step ahead of myself. When there is a delinquent billing, we are, that is facing an interruption in service, we will send out notices. And they get mailed to the, they get printed by our bill printer, they get mailed to the customer. In this case, we will be able to send a message, as you see in the bottom, that is interactive with our customer database, will give them the amount due and the date that it has to be paid for, paid by, to avoid interruption in their service. And then we generate campaigns for that interruption in water service. In this case, this is a, is a non-payment situation. But we also can do them for emergency water outages. Say we have an instance where a pipe is broken and we've lost service to several neighborhoods at one time. We can send out a broad email, a broad message, and you'll see we can do that using multiple communication methods. So we find the addresses that we need to notify, we select the methods, and then we submit them, and they send. Our customers will receive notifications by text, by phone call, or by email, depending on their selection of their preferred mechanisms. Some people like to receive it via all three ways. We started to, we were updating this information over the last two years. And it started with a mailer of a flyer asking them to update their information, and we received boxes upon boxes. Some of our customer service time during the pandemic was spent entering this data into our customer database. So again, we're planning on using it, at least initially, for our planned enlarged emergency water outages, for interruptions in service, and for other Paulding County water notices and announcement. Just an idea of the timing, this is just a calendar of March going into April. And I've called out where the billing cycle starts, where we send bills to our printer. And then normally, it follows the black text route, where we go next to a delinquent notice and then to interruption of service at the bottom on the last week, shown on the calendar. In this case, we'll be able to notify delinquent accounts that same week. A little later in the week, we'll generate it and send it. That middle week between the last two, we'll send out, we'll update the list to take anyone who's paid off of that notification and send another list that people are ready to be disconnected if they do not pay by that due date. So the one thing we are really promoting now is update your contact information. If something has changed, if you have a new email address, if you have a new phone number to contact you, please let us know. We have the notify update form on the webpage. We have been sending messages out with our billings for the last month and a half, and we'll be continuing to get that word out. And thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Did you all generate this internally, or is it?
Yes, sir. Oh, the software is actually part of our MUNIS system. And they have been working hand-in-hand with IT for an extensive period of time, trying to get this up and running and still protecting security and interacting with phone systems. So we are, but we're really, really proud to be able to finally be putting it on the street.
Customers seem to be catching on to it.
The first message has not gone out yet. We wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to hear what we were planning before we started sending those, but there is one planned for tomorrow.
Good job.
I have no one who signed up for public participation on agenda items this morning. Under the consent agenda, required to read these. Consideration of the following items. Number five is to adopt state court job classification for court coordinator for the clerk of court's office. Number six is to adopt state court job classification for deputy clerk for the clerk of court's office. Number seven is to adopt fire department job classification for an EMS educator. Number eight is to adopt fire department job classification for senior administrative assistant. Number nine is to approve the disposal of fire engine by donation to the City of Aragon Volunteer Fire Department. And I'm not going to read the, well, the department is fire. The item name is Unit 499, a truck, a 1995 International. And serial number is available, if you want to look at it, at the table in the back. And number 10 is to declare the following SCBA equipment surplus and approve for donation to the City of Aragon also. 24 Survive Air Panther packs, and 24 masks, and 48 bottles. Any of the commissioners like to move any of the consent agenda items to regular business? Hearing none, we'll keep them there. And moving on to old business. Item number 11 is from the Planning and Zoning Meeting. Application 2022-02-Z, which is an application by Jenny Stanfield requesting to rezone 7.66 acres of R2 Suburban Residential District to A1 Agricultural District to facilitate a small market garden. The property is located in Land Lot 1115, District 3, Section 3, north side of Dewest Road, west of Ivy Lane and west of Hiram-Aquith Highway, State Route 92, at 352 Beecham Path in Post 1. The recommendation by the planning commission was denial with a vote of 3, 2, and 1. And it was tabled from February 22, 2022, the Board of Commissioners' meeting. And most importantly, this application has been withdrawn by Ms. Stanfield, and no action will be taken on this item. Therefore, it will not appear before the board at the 7:00 PM meeting tonight. But my county clerk said I had to read all that anyway. Now it's all archived. Old Business, number 12, is discuss action to award the low bid provided by Barto Paving the amount of $80,287 for paving of the region's building parking lot in Post 4. It was tabled from the March 8, 2022 Board of Commissioners' meeting. Mr. Green.
Yes, thank you. We did table that after looking at a few things with pricing. We do know pricing is going up on asphalt in general and construction in general right now. This particular parking lot is not so urgent that we need to pave it right this minute, particularly with this method. So we're going to recommend that we reject all bids at this time. We're also going to look at some other options, maybe bring the cost down, maybe do something a little less than a full resurfacing. And I think we can save some money. And I appreciate Commissioner Stover weighing in on that and giving us a little pause to rethink it. I do appreciate, you know, there was a lot of effort in collecting the pricing. DOT assisted with that, as well as analyzing the patching that was needed. We also have some other repairs that we will be making in the near future per our lease agreement with the bank. We need to take care of their drive-through and things like that. So we do still need to move forward on some other improvements, and we'll be addressing that as soon as possible.
Any questions for Mr. Green? Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Item 13 is discuss action authorized the chairman enter into a contract with Pond and Company for a feasibility concept and master plan on property associated with parks. Associated with parks, recreation, and cultural affairs adjacent to the Richland Creek Reservoir in the amount of $39,200. This will be funded through Sploston in Post 4. Michael Justice.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Over the last several years, as you guys are more than aware, we've acquired quite a bit of property that's adjacent to the reservoir that is all designated for public use associated with the parks, public use, public access. Over that same time period, we've come up with 1,000-plus different ideas. What this part will do is actually identify what is the most feasible things to do there. It will involve several stakeholder groups, lots of them actually, and will help to develop a concept to develop that property to the extent that we can for public use. So obviously, we recommend approval of this award so that we can get started.
Do you have any other bids?
Not for this one. We, under professional services, we weren't required to for that dollar amount. As we go forward from here, we will, because then we'll get into the design and the engineering and the actual contract and the development from there. So as far as the concept, we've interviewed this group on three different occasions and are comfortable with them moving forward.
Hey, Michael, will they be reaching out to any of the public?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's a part of this, a lot of public input from various different groups, some we've met from and with in the past, and some that we don't know yet that we expect to kind of emerge during this process as we identify what types of things that we can actually do up there on the property.
Just make sure that they include the homeowners that live.
Yes, sir.
They're out there next to it. I have had discussions, a few of them, and they keep asking. And I told them, once we get so far along, that we would try to include them in on some decision-making to help us with ideas and stuff.
It's very exciting.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, number 14 is discuss action to amend the investment policy to allow investments in municipal bonds, as well as utilizing an investment advisor in making county investments. Ms. Pollard.
This is not quite as exciting as that, but over the past, I don't know, year and a half, interest rates have gone down. We are earning very, very, very little. And over the past, since this, in this budget year, y'all were so gracious to allow me to have two additional staff, which frees up a little more time. So to bring some of that money back into the county, we need to make a couple of changes to the investment policy. And what this will allow us to do is cash flow is, has to be monitored, so it takes a little more effort on our part. Timing was issue. It was hard to make time to put these forecasts in place, but we should be able to do that now. In making the adjustment to the investment policy, we don't make changes very often, but in around 2010, we amended it to allow investments in Georgia Fund One. And Georgia Fund One is with the state, and then the state pretty much makes the investment for us. That worked well for quite a few years, and then over the past few months, it's just declined, and they're not earning anything either. There's a fee, five basis points for participating in that Georgia Fund One. So this gives us some opportunity outside of that. In 2016, we invested in the, we had the reservoir bond proceeds and the jail proceeds, and we bid those out and made investments in some agency funds to generate some of that income to come back to help with those projects or the debt payment on those projects. So what this will allow us to do is very similar to what we've been doing, or to that particular amendment. This will allow us to invest in some municipal bonds if that opportunity presents itself. And it will also allow us to take some of the investments that we have and bid those out so that we can become more competitive and hopefully generate some more income for the county with some of the funds that we have just sitting currently. So that's pretty much summary of the investment policy changes.
Anybody any questions? Thank you. Well, you're the next one also. Number 15, discuss action enter into an agreement with Raymond James to provide investment services.
Over the past several years, we've had quite a few transactions with Raymond James. They have different divisions. This is their investment division. The particular investor that we're talking with is out of Tennessee, and he will bid these for us. So they will provide quite a few services in this investment. Number one with them being, they'll conduct the bids for us. They'll get our information out to the financial market to try to get us the best bid so that we can generate the most income. In doing that, they will evaluate and monitor, so they will look at the investments that we're currently using. They will evaluate the market, help us with They will evaluate the market, help us with what the terms of those investments should look like, what should the amounts look like, what's coming, what to be expected, because last thing we want to do is make an investment now and then the interest rates rise and we're not earning as much as we could. So we'll utilize them for, to conduct more information about the market and advise us on investments that we should make. And they will report to you every quarter. So they will give us a report, a portfolio analysis every quarter to show you what's been invested in and what those earnings have been over the course of time.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Pollard. Item number 16 is discuss action to approve the repair of two bracket green bar screens at the Pumpkin Vine WRF by wastewater industry solutions, WWIS, in the amount of $91,550. It's located in Post 4. Ms. Ashmore?
Maintaining a wastewater treatment plant is something that is ongoing. It's a harsh environment. It's exposed to temperatures. It is a, filled with chemicals, a lot of grit. And so we have completed repair, completed work on our Pumpkin Vine bar screens in June of 2021. When these bar screens were involved, it was believed that bar screens were the technology of choice for protecting membranes. It has been shown more recently that bar screens are not as highly effective in this environment as other methods of screening the wastewater before membranes. This is a, just to kind of refresh your mind about what we're talking about, these are the bar screens at Pumpkin Vine. They are bracket green bar screens. And the chains that we, the chains that we talk about and most of the parts we're talking about today are in the, where you see the white rollers on the side and behind that. So the screens have been inspected quarterly and our last inspection in January revealed a need for excessive adjustment in the chain, in the tension on it. And further inspection revealed excessive wear to the chain components. On the left, what you see is a worn-down connector that is in its normal condition, in its newly installed condition, would cover that the entire, would be as large as the sides that you see. That's how much that's been worn down. And then there's also damage to the materials on the right, both where it's worn down on the edge and on the inside edge at the connection. There are three things contributing to the excessive wear on the screens, and one is just the runtimes. They are currently running 24/7 in order to keep up with peak flows. There's an issue with low washwater flow. We're having to turn down the low washwater in order to keep it from overflowing the trough, which we have a picture of later. And also just grit, some of what you find in every, influence to every wastewater treatment plant in the world. We're proposing adjustments to the spray bars, adding trough extensions, and increasing the height of that trough to be able to handle more washwater, replacing the chain link spacers, the connecting pins, and the rollers to get that back into good condition again. And we're also proposing to change materials where we can to make that just a little more resilient than it is. This picture on the left, again, just gives some perspective of when we're talking about a washwater trough. This is a turned down flow into the washwater trough. When you run it at the rate it needs to be run at, it overfills. So we're talking about elongating it and raising the sides. And these are parts of the chain that we see as well. We are proposing that we, or we're requesting your approval for the repair of the screens. The total amount for both screens at $91,550. If there are any questions, I've also got Russell Kelly, our treatment division manager here, if you want to dig into the details anymore.
You brought a tech man in here?
I did.
All right, that's Pumpkin Vine. What about the others?
Copper Mine has already been replaced. It has got a rotating drum screen, which is much more protective of our membranes used to provide the remainder of the treatment process. It has been, it was replaced a couple of years ago and has been functioning great the entire time. We do have in our capital improvement plan, the replacement of these screens at Pumpkin Vine with the rotating drum screens as well. This gets us through to the point where that's scheduled.
Do we use our own technicians or do we contract that?
We contract that out. Wastewater Industrial Solutions is local, or I would say, they're not in Paulding, but they're local here on the west side of Atlanta. They do a lot of these rehab projects in the area and have been great service and follow-up.
Any other questions? Thank you, Lori, very much.
Thank you.
And finally, item number 17 under new business, discuss action authorize the chairman enter into a contract with Edison Engineering for design and engineering services for new pickleball courts at Burn Hickory Park in the amount of $22,250. This is a SLOST-funded project in Post 4, but someone would like to have it in Post 2.
You guys control that. Let's get our minds off those pictures for a minute and talk about something fun. As you're aware, pickleball is a growing activity. There was a rather large group that addressed you a couple of months ago with the interest in expanding our availability for that activity. Prior land use ideas at Mount Tabor are going to keep us from doing it there at this time. We can do it at Burn Hickory and accommodate it, you know, fairly quickly. We did receive, for this dollar amount, for the design, let me go back to that, we didn't have to advertise, but we did solicit a couple of quotes. We received two. Edison was the lowest of the two. We've worked with them in the past and are very comfortable moving forward with them on that. After it is designed, then we'll go through the advertisement process and solicit bids, and then we'll come back to you for approval of a construction contract to get those done. It is in Post 4. It is in Burn Hickory Park.
This came to mind, you know, I know people that have come and talked about pickleball and talking to other counties, they add to their facility and to the venue so that you can have tournaments there and things like that?
Yes, sir.
Is that a huge additional move on our part to?
I think it depends on the size of the tournaments that you want to host and what you want the scope of those tournaments to be. Basically, if we take the same footprint that we have for courts now, for tennis courts, we use pretty much a standard four-court quad, if you will. We can get eight pickleball tournaments, I mean pickleball courts within that same footprint. You can certainly do some small-scale tournaments, things like that there. Large scale, I'm not sure that eight would accommodate it. You can also include, as we've talked about in the past, we've striped our tennis courts, but neither group really likes that concept. We've had to go with that just based on what we had available at the time. So there's, you know, there's opportunities to expand. I'm not sure how big you could go with eight courts, but that's still, you know, a fairly large group, you know, for the beginning stage. Can we expand? Absolutely.
Other questions?
I think I see the young lady that spoke to us back there, she could probably answer some of those questions, but me and Sandy, we wrestled for it and I won. But no, thank you. I, you know, never played pickleball, but what turned me on, and I think she said you can lose 40 pounds by playing it, so I need to lose 40 more than Sandy does.
Let me know when you're playing and I'll go play with you.
That'll work, me, you, and Dave.
Yes. I don't know if I want to do that. He's pretty competitive.
Dave will give you a black eye.
We're excited about the opportunity to add that and see what happens with it when we get it there.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
That is the conclusion of regular business. No one signed up for non-agenda items. Comments from commissioners? Announcements?
Somebody's got a birthday tomorrow, don't they? Seventeen or 27, or 72?
There's a seven in there.
Happy birthday tomorrow.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Dave. I want to just give a friendly reminder about an in-person meeting, and that's tonight here at the Watson Complex in the lobby from 5 to 7. That's on the US 278 planning study. That's on proposed improvements from the Cobb Line to Buckcannon Street out here in front of the courthouse. So encourage everybody to come, come give some input.
I just want to thank the Sheriff's Department. I've had many, many calls regarding their last raise, and there, we made a lot of people happy over there, so thanks for that and thanks for the work that y'all do.
I spoke to county administrator, still administrator? I'm going to start calling manager here pretty soon, I think. Did you check on that?
He's officially the administrator at this point in time.
Okay. Okay, before the meeting today, you noticed there's an empty seat here. Everybody knows that Chuck Hart resigned for family and personal reasons and health reasons for his parents, taking care of them. And there will be, this seat filled at the primary for cost savings to the end of 2022. And then there will be, on the same day, there'll be a vote for who fills the next four-year term. But Mr. Baker said that he would invite Dieter to come to our next meeting, so just a preview of that. He'll, she will explain everything going on in the election in May. Any other comments? Just wanted to tell you that's, it can be a little confusing, right? So we need to hear from her. All right, we do have requirement for executive session for real estate. Entertain a motion that, well, hold on. We're going to start a new procedure at the end of the closed session. I don't know, maybe the marshal stays around, but usually when we come back in, no one's in here. But we will do business across the hall, and then following the conclusion of the executive session, the Board of Commissioners will be adjourning from that location, from the executive session. It will not be returning into this room for any further votes or action. Is that correct? Close enough? Okay. So now entertain a motion that we go into executive session for real estate.
I make a motion to go into executive session for real estate. I knew I was going to set up.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kakers. Or second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Don Hollis in favor. Say aye. We stand adjourned for executive session.